Karen, can I mention something?
Sure.
Is okay. Last month, I asked Jim if we were going to announce all those present. And he said, yes. But unfortunately, it was just Julie that knew who was present. Okay, I think, I don't know, is there any objection that as a practice, before the meeting begins, we should be announcing by name all that are in attendance? Because normally, we would do that in a, in a live meeting.
We have never done that before.
I know.
I'm not even sure with Zoom, we can do it, actually.
It's a public.
I know, I can't, I can't see everyone on the screen.
That's a good question to ask Gail when it's, when she comes up for, yeah.
Good idea.
That's a good idea.
I think it's a good, a good idea at the beginning of the meeting for the chair to ask each member of the commission who is present. That's what's important, and anybody who's invited to attend.
Okay, but what about, what about all those in attendance?
Yeah, you don't need to keep track of everyone that's in attendance.
Okay, good to know.
Thank you for answering that.
Usually, at a public hearing, you might be interested in knowing the people that were in attendance for the record. But for a regular meeting with no public hearing, it, it, it's not so important.
Thank you.
Just say hello.
So what's coming tonight, Gail, is a public hearing?
No, it's not.
Oh, we're not, we're done? Okay. Thank you, Kim. I have the wrong piece of paper. I have a September paper. Sorry.
Is Bill on here?
Oh, hi, Bill. You're.
Hi, Bill.
Okay.
We can't see you, but we hear you.
Why can't you see me?
Maybe check and see on that lower left if your video is on.
Stop video.
Oh, there you are.
There you go.
Hi.
Now we see you, Bill.
And hi, I haven't seen you. You, how you doing, Alan?
I'm doing okay.
Good.
I can see you. I don't know if you can see me.
I can.
Oh, yeah.
Very clear.
Hi, Alan.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you. No, no voice.
You want to mute it?
Oh, we have. We can hear him.
You should be on.
Yep, we're here. We're just on.
Ellen, we can hear you.
Good.
Okay.
All set?
Yep.
Okay, I do have 7:30. So I'd like to call to order our meeting of the Roxbury Zoning Commission via Zoom or teleconference Tuesday, October 12th, 2021, 7:30 PM. Seating of members. We will seat our regular members, Kim Tester, Elaine Curly, Alan Johnson, Bill Horgan, and myself, Jim Conway. And I also like to ask, is Cheryl or Candy here tonight, this evening?
No, they both emailed. They couldn't be here.
Okay, I know Cheryl was not going to. I didn't hear from Candy, so.
Okay.
Candy emailed as well, I saw.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we have our regular members seated. Public comment. We have none this evening, and I'm going to take a quick moment to just discuss public comment because at our last meeting, we did have a member of the public show up and want to speak about an agenda item that was on the agenda. That we don't allow. You can stop into the office. There's, I mentioned forms, but there are no forms. But you have to let Karen or John, somebody know what exactly you want to speak to. It can't be an agenda item, and it can't be about any commission member or anything like that. So when somebody shows up and we have an application on the agenda, and it's not a public hearing, the public can't speak to that. Okay? Karen does have a copy. She sent it to me. I didn't have a chance to print it and put it so you all could see it, but there is a copy of our, not regulations, but criteria.
Yeah, it's like a procedure.
Yeah, for public comment. There's about seven, seven different things that have to be met. So anyway, that's where public comment stands. So we have approval of minutes of the public hearing and special merit meeting of September 20th. So we'll go to the public hearing. And if anybody has any changes they'd like to make, I do have one myself, which I can start with. And that's on page two. Fifth paragraph, paragraph starts with Ann Coffin. And third line down, Chairman Conway stated, "The front setback of 50 feet is a state regulation." I don't believe the 50 feet is a state regulation. I possibly said that, but I would like to correct it because it's our town zoning reg. I don't really think the state has any say in it. But we have a front setback of 50 feet, a rear setback of 50 feet, and the side setbacks are 30 feet. Those are ours. So I'd like to take out state regulation. Our front setback is 50 feet.
Okay, I have that one.
Okay, thank you.
This is Elaine. On page two, same page, the fourth paragraph states that Mr. Valeris of 91 North Street came forward with concerns that this will have a negative effect on his property values. He did state that, but it was clear to the commission that Mr. Valeris was not referring to the, the topic at hand at that time, which was adaptive reuse, that it was another matter. So is, can that be reflected?
Yeah, that's true.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
So can, can we say that he was commenting on 6 Baker Road?
Is that what it was?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I'm sorry, do you hear that? I'm going to mute myself.
Yeah, I hear it too. Okay.
Thank you, Elaine.
Okay, anything else in our minutes of the public hearing? Alan wasn't there, so it's just the four of us.
Okay.
If everybody's good with those minutes, I would like to ask for a motion to approve.
This is Kim. I have motioned to approve the, the minutes of the public hearing, September 20.
This is Elaine Curly. I second the motion to approve the minutes of September.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Elaine, you were in favor?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
All in favor?
Alan abstained.
Alan abstained.
Thank you.
Now we go to our minutes of the special meeting, September 20th, 2021. Does anyone have anything there?
I do. This is Elaine, under Business, McDonald Baker Road. Chairman Conway stated an application for 1152 square feet garage addition. Is that from a former piece of paper? Or is that just an error?
Yeah, the 1152 actually is the apartment. The garage addition is larger. The 1152, I believe, without looking at the application, 1152 is the apartment. The accessory apartment.
Yep.
Application for square foot accessory apartment, and the garage addition is, is larger.
Okay, so can we label it?
Sure.
Thank you. 1152 square foot.
Is the accessory apartment.
Accessory apartment. Wrap and take out garage addition?
No, I would say and a garage addition.
Okay.
They'll leave garage addition in the, the apartment's in the second floor in the center area of the addition.
So the 1152 is referring just to the apartment space?
Correct.
So we don't want to say and garage addition of the garage addition?
Of the garage addition, because the garage addition is where the accessory apartment is located.
Thank you. That's the only thing I get.
So to clarify, we are leaving the 1152, but we're labeling it as the accessory apartment.
Correct.
Of, of the garage addition.
Of the garage addition. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? If everybody's good with the minutes, we will, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
This is Elaine Curly. I will move to approve the minutes of the special meeting, how September 20th is amended.
And do we have a second?
Bill seconds.
Bill seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the minute? All good. Alan abstains. All right, we've done our minutes. This leads us to a general discussion with Town Council regarding zoning commission interpretation of regulations. And Gail is with us this evening to answer any of your questions on implementation of our regs pertaining to applications. Gail?
I was going to ask Julie if she could not share the screen now, so we could all be on the screen together.
Sure.
Oh, that's great. Okay, thank you. Like, oh, here we are.
Okay, we, we do have Gail. Would you like to begin?
I, I can begin. I didn't know if there were specific questions that the commission wanted.
Yeah, if there's specific questions, Kim, Bill, Alan, you just got back with us, Elaine.
Well, I think.
That was time.
I think, Gail, when I spoke, we had just kind of an agenda, you know, some agenda items to maybe go through, and then might start some conversation. Maybe procedure for motions and.
Yes, the procedure for motions, our courts have ruled that a motion that's made has to be the motion of every, everyone voting on the same reasons for approval. So when you, or reasons for denial. So when you make a motion to approve or deny, the motion includes the reasons, rather than going around and asking each person what their individual reason is. Because it's the decision of the entire board, the entire commission, not any individual. So to do that, and, and the courts have been pretty, uh, pretty strict about this, that we're looking for a decision of the commission. And where the state statutes often say that the commission has to give reasons for its decision, the court will not consider individual reasons. So, so what you need to do, let me just finish. And so what you need to do when you make a motion is you can, before you make the motion, put together a list of reasons that can be by individual members that they add, and then when the, when the, when the vote is made and the resolution is voted on, it'll be including all of those reasons, so that the commission has one set of reasons for the entire commission.
Okay, on this bill, so we have to get together.
That was, that was.
We have to get together at the table and have a joint discussion to come up with a a common reason why we accept.
Exactly.
And that's, that's.
And, 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 yeah, you're, you're correct, Bill. And one person could put together, could be the, the sort of the person appointed to put together those and so that you have a motion that contains the reasons you want, and you can discuss if you want to leave some of those out or keep them together if they do, but they need to, when it's voted on, it needs to represent that every person on the commission voting for or against exactly the same thing.
So, Gail, the exact timing of that is prior to the motion being made or after the motion is made and before it's voted on?
Yeah, what, sometimes what, what towns do is they designate somebody on the commission, or if you have staff, and Roxbury really doesn't have staff to do this. Designate somebody to put together a proposed motion. And then the commission can, can deliberate, think about it, and see if they want to add something to that motion. Take something out of that motion and work it out. And then once it's worked out, then the motion is made for a resolution that includes both the, how, how the commission's going to vote for or against, and also the rationale for that vote.
Okay, I've got a question, Gail. We're speaking of hypothetically an amendment change, or a, a change to a reg, mending a reg. And it's already been public hearing. We've already discussed it. It's all ready to vote. So I ask for a motion. And I've got four people out there. And somebody votes to adopt. And then I get no second. Does that mean? Then that means it automatically fails without a second.
Right.
If I get a motion.
Without a second, right.
Yeah, and if I get a motion and I get a second to that motion, that means two people out of the four. And does that, then I bring that to a vote?
Yes. And you can have discussion after you've done, after you've done the motion and the second, then you can further discuss it.
And if it's a motion. And if it's a motion to deny, then it's over. There's no discussion about denial.
If it's a text amendment, you, you can go ahead and do it. You don't have to give reasons for denial under the state statute for a text amendment. For a motion to approve a text amendment, you need to give the reasons for the decision. And those reasons should encompass consistency with the Plan of Conservation and Development. The, in, in, in the case where the Planning Commission has reviewed that, the Planning Commission's referral with the Planning Commission had a positive recommendation on the proposed language. And, and any other reasons that are health, safety, welfare, the rationale for the commission to, to do it. You don't have to list every, if there's 100 reasons you're doing something, you don't have to list, list 100 reasons. I'd say it's a good idea when you have multiple reasons to put, to state more than one.
Now, getting back to the motion, and there's five of us, Chairman does not make motions. In fact, Chairman doesn't vote unless there's to break a tie.
Yeah, I disagree with that. I disagree with that. I disagree with that.
But is that?
Yeah, I disagree, I disagree because you're not a, you're not a social club. You are designated to make these decisions on the behalf of the property owners, and I think everybody should vote. Usually, the chairman doesn't make a motion, but a chairman can make a motion on a zoning commission.
Okay, okay, so there's five of us. And a motion comes up to deny, and it's seconded. That's two of the five. The other three are in favor of it. How do we express that?
Then you might ask that, that motion be withdrawn, and you do a positive motion. Ask the people who made the motion if they will withdraw it in favor of a positive motion. And then what will happen is the majority of people will vote against it, which is a denial.
Okay. All right, got it.
It happens. It, it happens sometimes. It doesn't happen often, but it happens sometimes. It's better to have a positive motion.
Right.
Period. Yeah, even if, I've seen commissions that, even when they're going to deny something, somebody makes a motion to approve, somebody seconds it for the purposes of discussion, and then those same people vote against it.
All right. I think we've got that cleared. On, now, that's for text amendments and changes in regs. That leads me to approval or denial of just an application. Or, for.
Application, yeah. Applications are of several types. So typically, your commission deals with special permits.
Correct.
Which are, they are administrative approvals, so that if all the conditions in your regulations are met, they must be approved. If they are not met, they may not be approved. That's, that, so they're administrative in that way. What's different about a special permit than, than just a zoning permit sign off is that the state statute allows you to have special conditions for certain kinds of uses that are going to be, and those are uses which the location of them and how they work in the neighborhood may make a difference to whether they're acceptable or not. So your commission is allowed to determine that there's some uses that even though they're permitted, they're only permitted if they meet certain standards. And you're required by the state statute to state in your regulations what those standards are. And in your regulations in Roxbury, and almost, by the way, almost all regulations throughout Connecticut, the special permit use, the first year regulations show the permitted uses, which are permitted as a right, which is a residence in a residential zone is permitted as a right. I can put a residence anywhere in a residential zone, I have to meet setbacks. And a lot has to be, meet the lot size requirements, but those are very sort of black and white requirements. The special permit is typically used for businesses or other clubs or other uses where there could be a real impact on the neighbors if it's not carried out correctly. So those uses are the ones that your commission is designated as being special permit uses. And they usually, and they, not usually, they always require a site plan. And the site plan, when you look at your regulations under section, I, I think it's section five, the site plan requirements are integral with the special permit requirements. The special permit requires the site plan because when somebody says, "I'm going to use my property for this use that's a special permit use," you how the neighbors are affected. So because it's a special permit use, you want to see precisely on a site plan how that, how that works out.
Can I back up to motioning for an accepted use, building a residence in a residential zone, if the commission got an application for something that is allowed? And instead of signing off, we have to vote that application, deny or approval? And it means.
You have to approve it if, you have to, yeah.
It meets all the criteria.
Approve it if it meets.
Correct. And do we do that through the same motion process, or do I just ask for a general consensus?
No, it's the same motion process. And, and the motion probably would be that it's a permitted use in the district, and it meets all the requirements, the zoning regulations for that permitted use, which usually is setbacks, area, those kinds of things.
We don't get them very often, but.
You don't, you get, you get them when the zoning enforcement officer refers them to you, either because of conflict on the part of his, 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 or if, if he's uncertain about how to interpret the regulations.
Okay.
So you're, it's section seven is the site.
I'm sorry, seven. I'm, I, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, more questions?
This is Bill. You know, can we discuss more specifically site, section seven, section 18? And I can just, you know, there's a, a little small grill in the room, but we can't ask questions about that with Gail right now. We can just ask general questions.
You can't, yeah, you can't, Bill, you can't ask about an, an application you're going to be taking up during the, the meeting tonight. I will tell you that I've been asked about interpretation of, of 7.3 of the regulation on site plans. And I do think that this regu, this regulation probably needs a little help. When you read the introduction to it, it sounds like it applies to every single application that comes into the town. But we have, uh, our, our courts have told us how to, how to read regulations and, and how you should interpret regulations, and they have to be interpreted as a whole, so that everything makes sense when you read it. And the first part of that regulation under section seven, if any of you have it before you, starts off and says, "A site plan, as prescribed in this section, shall accompany the application for any permitted uses or special permit." And even though it says that, when you read on, it says, "Applications for dwellings and permitted accessory buildings and uses shall be submitted to the zoning enforcement officer together with such informalities as he may prescribe." Well, zoning officers sign off on permitted uses within a district. They make those determinations all daily, every day, on setbacks, heights, all those sorts of things. They, they do not make decisions on special permits because they're more discretionary in determining whether the regulations are met for a special permit. You've got to look at how it fits into the neighborhood. You would never do that on a residential, like a straight residential home. It's permitted as a right because those uses are deemed permitted under the regulations. So when you read on through that regulation, then you start. So when you read on through that regulation, then you start seeing that it sets for standards for a site plan approval and you read those standards and when you read those, you see that they're special permit type standards where you're making decisions on the impacts, the locations, visibility, traffic, truck parking. There's no way you can read through those regulations and, and, and determine that those could apply to a residential situation. They just don't. There's section on special permits. If you look at it, does say, go to section seven and makes it a site plan part of the special permit application. And that, that is what this was meant to do. And it's even though I, I agree, there's some confusion at the beginning. It probably needs the word however, or the word but or something in between the first sentence and the part that deals with residential.
Yeah, what we're.
And I'm, I'm fairly certain, yeah, I'm fairly certain that this were interpreted, if you were to use this site plan for every application that comes in to Roxbury uniformly. I'm fairly certain if anybody looked at this from a court or a, appeal situation, that they would not agree that this was applicable to a, a straight residential use.
This is Kim. So does that mean that the regulation as written should be more, you know, be rewritten in some section or some way?
I think it should probably, I think it probably needs a word however, or at the minimum, at a minimum. It applies, and I'm not sure if there's any situation in Roxbury where you would allow a site plan without a, where there's no special permit also required for that use. I mean, you'd have to go through all these regulations and see if there's some situations where it's not really a special permit use, but you want to see a site plan. It would be a commercial type use. Those would be commercial type uses. And, and your commercial uses in your zone D, if you take a look at that zone are pretty much by special permit, I believe. Am I correct, Jim? I think I'm.
Yes, yes. Everything down there is by special permit now.
Well, Gail, this is Bill. If you, you, you're fairly certain, you're not positive, but you're fairly certain. The thing we're working with right now is we're working with what's here, not something that should have.
You are.
And basically, we, we represent hundreds of millions of dollars of property. And let's say, for instance, that we got, as you mentioned before, if we became, as this was tossed back to us, and we became the zoning enforcement officers. Wouldn't we have to be, follow this regulation as it's written to the team?
The zoning office, the zoning enforcement officer can't even make these kinds of determinations. If you look at the kind of determinations under these standards, zoning officers make determinations that are very black and white. What we call administrative approvals. And they're making those kinds of determinations. When it talks about, let me give you an example.
I'm going to make a comment if I would for the person who's, is listed as the iPhone. If you could mute yourself, that would be really helpful because the sound is, is interrupting the meeting if, if that's okay. So whoever the iPhone, whoever the iPhone is. Yep.
So Bill, at the very beginning of seven point three, it says, in reviewing site plans, zoning commission takes into consideration the public health, safety and general welfare, the comfort and convenience of the general public. And as a condition.
Where's that?
It's the beginning of seven point three.
Okay.
It's, and by the way, this is zoning commission and zoning commission does absolutely does not in your town or in almost any town I know, sign off on all, for instance, residential uses that are permitted as a right. You just, they don't all come before you. But this says, the zoning commission shall take into consideration the public health, safety and welfare, the comfort and convenience of the general public. And as a condition of approval may require such modifications of the proposed plans as it deems necessary to comply with the spirit as well as the letter of these regulations. Those kinds of, that kind of review that I've just mentioned is not a zoning enforcement officer type review. The zoning enforcement officer is your agent that signs off on the regulations where there are very, very distinct requirements. He doesn't have the discretion to determine whether something is comfortable or whether something is is in the spirit of the regulations. He's not doing that. So this, this regulation, and I didn't write it. So I don't have any pride of authorship with it. But this regulation is definitely a site plan that's in conjunction with a special permit. And the special permit conditions and those kinds of standards that are in here can be used for a special permit review. But they cannot be used for permitted uses as a right. I can tell you the other, the other place in Roxbury where you wouldn't use it is agricultural. You have permitted agricultural uses within your zones. And you would never put the agricultural applicant into this kind of thing. Now, once in a while, there could be very special parts of those uses that you've determined to be special permit uses. For example, a home occupation, which is your third level home occupation. You might have some kinds of uses that could occur in a residential, in a residential setting where there is such an impact on the neighbors and so forth that you've determined by your regulations that there could be a special permit use.
There's some redundancy which kind of reinforces my, not skepticism, my questioning section seven. redundancy in section eighteen. Eighteen, three point three, where we also discuss the high quality of building design, neighborhood appearance. And grain and vegetation and over, oversight view. So it's mentioned again in administration. Is that section different than the, like, section seven chapter?
Yeah, and, and, and I, I have consistently, I guess, over the years indicated that those administrative sections where the zoning officer is making a discretionary decision on, on any approval that the zoning enforcement officer is doing are not permitted. The zoning commission under the state statute, under the state statute, the zoning commission has the authority to issue special permits on standards that are set forth and, and the same sorts of standards happen. What's interesting is in your regs, eighteen point two is zoning permits. We do issue zoning permits. You issue zoning permits for, from your town for, for dwellings because every building permit must have a zoning permit.
Sure.
Issued. But that's just very specific standards that are, as I said, the height of the building, the setbacks, those kinds of things. And the zoning officer can ask for a, a two survey to show exactly where those setbacks are. So that's, that's what you can do with a residential.
So that, that's covered in section eighteen and eighteen point two zoning permit. Everything requires a zoning permit, everything. And then it goes on to the standards and in those standards.
And these standards, I'm going to be very careful because somebody may use my words. But these standards have not been applied to zoning permits and should not be applied other than the ones that are very black and white. So when you talk, when you, when, when you talk, when you, when somebody's coming in with a house, a dwelling house, and you're evaluating it and denying that application because the effect of the proposed development on, on traffic conditions on a budding streets. I, I mean, you, I've been doing this for about forty years and I can tell you that I could never, if that were a reason for a denial, if that standard was determined to be not met and that were a reason denial and there was an appeal based on that, we would not be successful. Not the we, but your, your commission wouldn't or your zoning enforcement officer. I have actually pointed this out before and it's ba, it's, it's basically not used. It should be fixed, but it's basically not applied. It should be rewritten, absolutely.
Which is, this is Kim. So are you talking about the whole zoning permit section should be rewritten?
The sections where the, where there are standards should apply to special permits. Those standards at, for instance, at eighteen point three, those are appropriate standards for special permits. But they're not appropriate standards for a sign off for a permitted use as a right. And, and actually, if you think about it, it's no longer a permitted use as a right. Right? Because it becomes a permitted use subject to a whole bunch of standards that are just more discretionary. Your commission, zoning commission, has the ability to use discretion in determining whether standards are met. And you can have much broader standards as long as they're health, safety and welfare designed type standards. So these standards at, at eighteen point three are not bad standards. It's just the, the amount of ground cover and some of these other things, you're not, you're not doing this with residential houses. And I would, I wouldn't think, I don't know of any ta, I don't know of any town that does that. You might be able to figure out where plot plans are required for residential houses not to show how much landscaping they have, but to show where the driveway is, to show where the frontage is, to look at the position of the house based on setbacks, those kinds of things.
Or, or any permitted use, any, anything that requires a permit.
I mean, the protection of environmental quality. I mean, those are, these, these standards that are in eighteen, eighteen point three says, in reviewing his own, and by the way, there are zoning permits for special permit uses. So a special permit use comes in, use in your commercial zone, comes in, gets approved. And then you'd issue a special permit. That, that owner goes to apply for a building permit. And they apply for a zoning permit and they get a zoning permit. But these, these traffic conditions on the abutting streets, all of those sorts of things are the kinds of things that are special permit uses.
I'm gonna, I'm just taking, this is Kim. I'm just taking a look at the end of the zoning regulations. It's been very helpful, you know, periodically to look and see when these things were written. And eighteen was, was effective October first, nineteen eighty-three. So I've got to think that, you know, just from what Gail, what you and I went through with the non-conformity, all the things that are no longer legal that had to be changed in order to bring them up to current standards. So I think that's important when we're looking at the regulations to look back and when some of these things were applied. And when you look, it doesn't even list eighteen point three, which means that it was probably there in eighty-three and the others are twenty years old. So.
I, I can tell you that I remember reading through this for the first time and thinking those are, those are some problems. I will say that it hasn't been improperly used as far as I know. Ever. So that's a good part, but I agree, the regulations and probably each one of these may be section by section. Sections of your regs probably should be looked at and brought up to date. There are state statutes, cases come down. I mean, part of what I'm telling you about interpretation is because we've had a lot of court cases over that timeframe you've talked about where these regulations get interpreted and the powers of zoning officers are interpreted and the powers of zoning commissions and what the regulations say. It is true that the words in the regulations matter, but it is also true that you have to read the regulation as a whole to come up with something that's tenable, that's something that, that works. And that's what our courts do when they evaluate those regulations.
Very good.
So we just, but we still have to act on the black and white that's in front of us and not what should be brought up to date, but what is current right now. We have to make.
Right. And I think, you know, one of the questions that, what I was asked is about, for example, if we're looking at something that's in harmony aesthetics. And we have, Connecticut is, the state of Connecticut's whole zoning regime is set up as, as it is with many other states so that aesthetics cannot be a basis for an approval unless you have a village zone where you have an architectural review and there's a state statutory provision for that. So there are some specific ways that aesthetics can play, to play a role. But in, in general, they are not a, not a, not a role. So some of the, the kinds of review you do when you look and try to see if something's conformity with the neighborhood, it's usually not, it's not based on aesthetics. Now, I will say that applicants, when you come in with a, a rendering, let's say it's in the commercial zone and you come in with a building and you say, I like this, I'd like to, this doesn't seem like it's consistent with our town. Usually they want to comply and they try to bring a plan in that works. So it isn't always the case, but it's often the case. But an example of that is someone who comes in with a residence that is so out of kilter with the neighborhood and you people say, we don't want to, we don't like that. We don't want to approve it. Well, our, our courts have said that beauty is in the eye of the beholder and that a residential home is a permitted use and that you don't have a right to even legislate a standard that lets you look at aesthetics for that. The only time you can do that is if you create a village district. And a village district allows architectural review. There is architectural review by the historic district commission. So important areas of Roxbury are already controlled architecturally through the, not through zoning, but through the historic district commission that has standards and issues certificates of zone of oh gee, words just left me, appropriateness. So the certificate of appropriateness by the, by the historic district commission are indeed aesthetic, but their aesthetic tied into historical features. So we've got a, and I, I, I took a look and I thought, gee, gee, I better check this and make sure there's been no change. And we have a, a textbook called Land Use Law in Connecticut that all our judges and everybody reads. It was written by a, a judge of the Superior Court. And the first line is zoning regulations cannot be based on aesthetics. Since the enabling statute eight dash two, which gives you all the powers to issue zoning regulations, does not refer to aesthetics as a proper consideration for zoning, unlike statutes in other states. So Connecticut, all your authority to, to adopt zoning regulations comes under this long statute, H dash two, which is mainly health, safety, welfare. It's the one that'll let you consider housing and different kinds of housing. It sets forth the parameters of what the zoning regulations can be. And one of those is not aesthetics. But then the state statutes were revised to allow these village zones because there was an, particularly in towns not unlike Roxbury where there's wonderful village historic downtown areas that it, there was a real need to protect. So that, that zone set up very specific requirements under the statute to create a zone where aesthetics can be a factor. And those, and those aesthetics are historical aesthetics.
Elaine. Now you're muted. Elaine, you're muted. Yep.
Gail, I think what you're saying is within the state of Connecticut, there is no such thing as, has an aesthetic overlay district? Or is it just labeled as village district or historic district?
No, you can't have a zoning regulation that decides an application based on aesthetics. Unless you're in, historic districts are not zoning districts. Those are historic district commissions. And that's a whole different set of regu, set of, of statutory provisions. The Connecticut section eight dash two that delegates from the state, the authority for towns to have a zoning commission and for that zoning commission to legislate its zoning regulations does not permit an aesthetic standard in your regulations. With this one exception that I've mentioned. Which means that I, when you, you know, I know, there are, there are ways. Which means that when you, you know, I know, there are, there are ways, I can tell you, there's a few ways to get at it, that towns have done that. Town of Southbury has planned development districts. And in their commercial zone, and you can do it, also, it can be residential, if it's a multifamily residential type situation. They allow an applicant, they have strict standards that look like setbacks and how much of the land you can cover and use, and all those sorts of things. But if you have a unique application that you think has design merit, and they have a bunch of requirements for this, you can come in and you can write a zoning regulation for a large piece of property. And within that zoning regulation, you can put in in general standards and renderings, and you, the owner is sort of submitting themselves to say, here's what it's going to look like. And the commission can look at that architectural rendering and decide if it wants to approve that. So for, and it's used, they're called planned development districts, and it's used in, Southbury uses it, Middlebury uses it. Woodbury has development districts for industrial, very small number of industrial districts up in the north side of Woodbury. Westport uses it. A few towns have used it, it's been tested. It was tested on, as, on whether it was spot zoning. So if I come in and take a piece of property and then zone it for just that one piece of property, is it spot zoning? And our courts have said it's never spot zoning if it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development. So whatever that plan is that somebody comes in with, they have to make it consistent with a plan of conservation and development. And if it's good for the community in the scheme of zoning in your town. So there, I guess there, that's one other way that there is some aesthetics looked at. But in that case, it's the applicant coming in, the owner applicant coming into the commission saying, I'm going to create a zoning regulation, and I'm going to let you zoning commission decide if my general plan and my renderings, if you like those on a discretionary basis, and that's a zone change. So it's a very discretionary, if you turn it down, you don't have to give a reason. If you approve, you give a reason, so it allows a great deal of discretion. And the owner writes the zoning regulation for their own land. So it's interesting.
Very good. Does anyone have, just to keep things moving along, does anyone have any other questions for Gail pertaining to some of our past meetings and upcoming issues, anything? Because we have Gail with us, we can ask her. But if everybody's comfortable, Elaine?
I, um, I believe that one of the questions we had for Gail came out of the adaptive regs. Kim, that we're going to clarify a couple of questions from last month.
On the nonconformity?
Yes.
Well, we've, we've already done that, that'll be taken care of when we, when it comes up on the agenda.
When it comes up, okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, let's, let's move on then. I think we're good, and Gail's going to be with us a bit more. That leads us to item five on our agenda. Continue discussion of proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulation pertaining to nonconformity. And at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to add to the agenda on, under item five, to, and to vote on the nonconformity amendment. We left that off. So continue discussion of proposed amendments pertaining to nonconformity and to vote on the amendments. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So the, this is Kim, so the, the motion should be, I motion to, actually, I've totally lost it, what you were saying.
Add to the agenda.
Okay.
To add to item five of our agenda, the word, or two words, and vote.
Oh. All right, so I motion to add to the agenda on item five and vote on the nonconformity regulation.
Correct. Very good. So that's done.
Second to motion.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That completes that. So anyway, continue discussion. Kim, maybe you can bring us up to date, they have been corrected.
Jim, was that unanimous?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
So we had numbering issues, correct?
Yes, so what I, what I realized before contacting Gail when I was going through it, Candy had brought up at the last meeting, one of the three point ten point two of the proposed regulation that referred to section twenty point six four, which she said should have been twenty point six three, but that was incorrect. What we had written was correct as twenty point six four because the regulations she was looking at were not current. The current regulations are online. And so there was a shift made, and so the pages she was looking at, because she was looking at hard copy, were not correctly numbered anymore. So I just wanted to make that statement, that it's important that going forward, that everybody refer to the regulations that are online on the town website, because those are current. It's virtually impossible for Karen to keep up with the changes, you know, and have everybody on the same page, it's really hard to do. Say that. So the things that we did change, should I go through each one, or?
Were they just numbers?
It was just numbers. There were a couple of typos. It was three point ten point six point four. And it should have been three point ten point six referencing it was written as four instead. And that mistake also happened. Three point ten point seven point three. So again, it was just a mislabeling. And then, I'll just go through it. If you guys have questions, let me know. Three point ten point seven, we just added at the end of that first statement, right after the numbering, by special permit, so people didn't have to guess and figure out at the end when they read it that it was by special permit. That was changed. And then just two other changes, was the same numbering that had to be altered. It was three point ten point ten. It was a section referenced as, should have been, it was three point five point five, four point three point five, and it should have been four point three point eight point five. Eight was missing. And then same thing true in three point ten point eleven. It should have been three point, or sorry, four point three point eight point five was the eight missing. And then everything else was fine. So it was just in those, those four numberings and the, and the by special permit just didn't get added, it was just changed to a different location, it was already.
Okay.
All right, I think we, I think it's pretty complete and very inclusive of everything, well done, well corrected.
Excuse me, Jim, this is Elaine. I believe, Kim, there was one other issue where we were going to ask Gail the intention. Do you remember that? We were unsure about the definition, I think.
I don't recall that, I do remember it was the numbering, because it referenced something totally different than what was in the, in the regulation standard, in that section.
Does anybody, Bill or Jim, do you remember it?
No.
I've got to go back to my, to my other notes to, to find it. But that was, that was essentially, we had kind of assumed that the renumbering wasn't going to make a problem. But the question in the air had to do with a definite, you know, defining it. I apologize, my memory is shot tonight.
Elaine, the only thing I recall is in the three point ten point ten and the three point ten point eleven, when that number, the four point three point five was referenced, because we weren't sure if it was supposed to be four point three or four point five, and they both said different things. And so that had to do with the definitions of what was happening in that. And so it's clarified by the fact that it's, the numbering is four point three point eight point five, and that answers the question. I believe that's what happened, because I do remember what you were saying. And I'm almost positive that had to do with those two numberings, because we weren't sure what it meant. Gail?
Okay. Yeah, I think if you, if you take a look at the regulations, four point three point eight was an adaptive reuse of historic barns section, which we were making jive with this section. And it had sections, it had sections one, two, three, four, five, and six. And somehow, we read the four point three eight, but didn't get to the subsection on that. But when you read that section, four point three, I'm sorry, four, four point three point eight, three, subsection five is obviously the section that's involved. Because what it says is, invent a historic barn is destroyed by fire, explosion, or axegod, the barn may be reconstructed. And that's what this whole section is about, is intent to, to rebuild when there's been a casualty or some kind of destruction situation. So it's, it's the obvious section that, that has to, has to be cross-referenced.
Okay.
Okay, if if everybody's good with what we've got in front of us, we need to come up with a reason to adopt. And so, Kim, what do you think? You've been the workhorse on this. We need a reason that all of us can agree with as far as it, it is compatible with the P O C D.
Yes, I think that's number one.
And it allows people to have a reuse for nonconforming barns.
Yep. And I think that the one thing is too, that, that the the town of Roxbury values historic structures. Something like that, if that's necessary. Gail, do you think that's?
Yeah, and this, this deals with more than historic. So this is nonconforming structures, but it does provide a way for people to have an incentive to keep their properties well-maintained, to allow them to be used productively and to have an incentive to maintain those, those structures. And I, and I would suppose that most of the buildings that are within setbacks probably are historic or near historic, because they were there before the regulations came into being that changed those rules.
Correct. So keeping it kind of simple, compatible with P O C D, and allows people to repurpose, nonconforming structures. And leave it, leave it there, it doesn't have to be wordy, and all of us have to agree. And that will be part of the motion.
And could I, could I add one more thing you might want to say? Because this, this picked up the regulation and brought it up to date with the statutes. It also provides for compliance with the statutes.
Okay. Kim, you're taking this down?
Yeah, so she cut out on part of that. Gail, if you wouldn't mind, you.
What I was saying is that it also brings these nonconforming regulations up to date with the state statutory requirements. I mean, it's up to your commission, but some of these changes were to accomplish that.
Right, yeah.
Okay, yep. Okay.
Very good. Kim, would you like to make that motion for us?
Sure. Okay, I motion that we approve the nonconformity regulation proposed three ten. And the reasons for that would be that it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development for the town of Roxbury. It helps repurpose nonconforming structures and brings the regulations for nonconformity up to date with state statutory requirements.
Very good. Now I'd like a second to that motion.
Bill seconds it.
Bill seconds, moved and seconded. Now we're going to ask for a vote.
Jim, can I ask a question? So it applies to ten, yeah, it applies to three ten, but it also deletes section eighteen point six. And, and revises the definition twenty point seventeen of barn, and adds twenty point two. You might want to amend your motion to add those.
Right, I'm amending my emotion, my, my motion. Do I have to state the whole thing, or just?
I would just say that the section numbers that you're revising.
Okay, so I'm also going to revise by deleting, motion to delete section eighteen point six. Did change and delete and substitute the definition for barn seven, twenty point seventeen, and to add twenty point two, the, to abandon.
Okay. And again, I'll ask for a second to that amended motion.
Bill seconds, Allison.
Bill, very good. And again, I will ask for the commission to vote on this amendment, and I, I will start, I vote in favor.
This is Kim, I vote in favor.
Sam, I vote in favor.
Elaine?
This is Elaine, I vote in favor.
Bill?
Bill votes in favor.
All in favor, unanimous. Thank you. And again, thanks, Kim and Gail, for going through this and getting it straightened out. Well done.
What I, what I don't understand, Gail, so at, at the end of every vote, we survey the commission individually, we don't have to do that any longer?
No, what you really do need to do is do that survey before you make the motion. And then any of those reasons can all be listed, and then everybody can agree those reasons should be part of the motion.
Thank you.
That's good, that cleans it up.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, we're going to move on. Item number six, we're continue discussing the application, Six Baker Road for addition to a dwelling with an accessory apartment within the addition. And we all got this last month. And there was questions, I don't know if we still have questions on it. If so, Bill, go ahead.
Dennis is, Dennis listening, you hear Dennis?
I don't know if Dennis is with us to answer any questions this evening. I'm sure he would speak up if he was.
Well, I have some questions I need him to answer. I can tell you the questions, but you can't answer them for him. Questions basically about verification accuracy of his application. So what are we doing now?
Well, tonight, we're going, we're at the end of our rope. We vote to approve or deny. And if we vote to deny this, we have to refer to a And if we vote to deny this, we have to refer to a section of our regs that isn't. This application doesn't complete.
In the regs is accuracy in. Of the application in our regs correctness and accuracy. I just wanted to find out the date, we can put so many applications in, I need to know the correct date, I think it's the twenty first. I need to know if the correct dress is is dress in Danbury, I checked it out, his address on the. In Danbury, one forty Post Road in Danbury is a vacant tree lot, there's nothing out, not even a mailbox. Uh, the A two survey is not scaled, now the new covered deck is not on the plot plan. The new driveways, especially to the back doors aren't in, the seventy six thousand dollar estimated cost of this thing is glaringly wrong. Plans and elevations aren't the scale and who owns the property because according to Caldwell Banker, it was sold in six sixteen nineteen or two thousand twenty one. So these are questions I needed to find out to make sure his application was accurate and we can't. Approve something that has an inaccurate application. Also, there's another wrinkle. Uh, that his accessory apartments and buildings. Uh, the recent regulations for accessory apartments, one building. Has to be eighteen hundred feet or less and has to be subordinate to another building, so there has to be a subordinate building with a maximum of eighteen hundred square feet. He has no subordinate building, the smallest building is the existing house, which is eighteen hundred and eighty feet. And the other structure, the red structure is forty eight hundred feet, so if that's the case. Uh, he's. He has an accessory apartment in the red building. But he wants one in the new pole barn building and because each of these eighteen hundred foot. There's no eighteen hundred foot. Of existing building that can be subordinate, they it's canceled out.
Bill, that, go ahead.
I don't think there's an accessory apartment in the red building.
No.
Well, yes, he has one, he has one planned.
Well, the application before us doesn't show an apartment in the red building.
Uh, Bill, he pulled, Bill, he pulled the old application and resubmitted a brand new one, which took out that first accessory. Apartment that was in the red one, so that's no longer on the docket. Now it's just the expansion of the main house.
Okay, if that's the case. The the red building is still an accessory standalone building, correct?
Yes, but the accessory apartment that he's proposing is an accessory that's part of and inside the main home. In essence, because that addition expands the size of the primary residence, which makes it. Um, fit the proportion, the accessory apartment can't be more than forty percent of the main home, which it fits in that that percentage.
I thought I had this all straightened out, now I'm confused again. And I'm confused by the eighteen hundred and the. So the red barn is not. A standalone accessory building.
Well, it is, but it's not, it has nothing to do with the accessory apartment because that application, that first one we looked at, whatever it was two, three months ago. He pulled that application, if I'm, am I correct, Jim?
Yes.
And then he resubmitted a new application, which was what came before us last month.
And I didn't, I didn't realize that there was a change.
Well, we denied the the one.
Yeah, we denied.
We denied it, I'm sure you remember that. Everybody denied the original application.
Yeah, because the application was confusing, not not just because of the.
So the only application we have before us tonight is new construction accessory apartment garage utility.
Correct.
Okay, it's listed as. Second floor area eleven hundred fifty two square feet, first floor area twenty four forty eight, we don't count that as square footage, right?
Not for the apartment. The apartment's eleven fifty two, the others garage, yeah.
Okay, so we're only considering one bathroom. Correct, and in the whole, on all the property, we're only considering one bathroom.
It's a one bedroom, one bedroom apartment with one bathroom.
Okay. Okay, but we're also considering the deck and the covered porch. Okay, so does anybody know the height of the new deck porch roof? Because I couldn't find it.
The new deck is not on the plot plan. And so it should be on the plot plan. And the plot plan is part of the application.
I've got a twelve by twenty one new deck to the east side.
Yeah, but if you look at the plot plan, this is Bill, if you look at the plot plan, it's not, the deck is not showing all the footprint of the plot.
It it's showing a ridge line, but I don't see a measurement.
Twelve by twenty one, two by ten floor joists. On my, it's not, hey, it's McDonald East Side new covered deck twelve by twenty one, it's labeled that.
That's building, ours is zoning and we should have an A two survey, which is not scaled. And and there's no, I'm looking at, this is what I got this afternoon from Karen's latest email about all the stuff we got, the twenty two pages we got. And the deck is not, the cover deck is not on this plot plan. It's not, it's the last. It's a plot plan page.
Are you looking at the one that's got the red writing on it or pink writing on it?
No, this is, this is hot off my printer, fifteen minutes for the meeting, the packet that Karen sent. There's clearly no covered deck on this plot plan.
I don't know why we got different ones, I've got. Two, one with the red writing.
That's what I had.
Every structure there and it says new covered deck twelve by twenty one. Colored in.
Dennis has plans with red writing on them.
Well, this is, I have these from last month. Because it's the same thing that we were talking about this month, so I.
Yeah, they're the same, this this plot plan.
This is what I'm holding.
No, that's.
For the deck.
That's just a building plan.
Yeah, for the deck, that's what I have on my hand.
Can you see mine?
Bill, Bill, take a look at what both of them have.
Go ahead, put them up again.
Nikki and Jim have it.
Who and Jim?
You can't.
No, hold it up better, Elaine.
No, they don't want mine, you don't want mine, right, Kim?
No, nope.
Jim's got the one.
You said Nikki.
Yeah, Nikki and Jim.
That plot plan, that's a plot plan with the scaled house on it that Jim has?
Yes.
Oh, it's been picky, but I mean, it is, it's not on the A two survey, which is the plot plan, we need an A two survey. With the layout of the house on it, that's one of the requirements that we have to have for building permit or for a zoning permit. Would help who is here, wouldn't it?
Jim, I think an A two survey is can be requested and and required if it's requested. I and I have no idea if it was requested here.
We haven't requested, no.
Yeah.
I think we should request that, I got all these pieces of paper and I can't tie them together.
Is, Gail, is an A two survey required?
It's it's permitted to be requested, so the zoning officer, and you're acting as a zoning officer in this situation. Um, the zoning officer can request it, his usual reason for requesting it is to see setbacks. Sometimes if you have a huge piece of property and something's in the middle and it's acres all the way around it, you don't need it because there's no, you know, no issue.
I think what we have. These are actually additions to the main house. So we kind of know where the main house is and he's putting an addition to the west and a deck to the east.
Yeah, because when I look at the. You know, there is a survey here that granted, it doesn't have the additions on there, but they are not going to. There's no problem with the setbacks here because of where the existing house is.
Correct.
So that's, I don't think it's necessary.
So we should just rehash then the eighteen hundred to make sure we were clear on the. The eighteen hundred, the subordinate building, that there's a subordinate building.
Well, he's not required to have one.
No.
He's not required to have an eighteen hundred subordinate accessory building, he's putting an apartment within the house.
Okay, so that's because he's not putting an apartment in the red building, okay.
Correct. The apartment's going in the residence.
And the red building is not a standalone building.
I don't have the red building on this application, doesn't even come up.
Well, if the red building is not. Considered a standalone building, then he could put the addition on his house in the apartment. If the, if the red building is a standalone building, that. Creates a situation where there's no subordinate buildings.
It's, I don't understand what the question is because it's not relevant to this application.
Okay. You're right about that.
Okay.
If, if, when we say standalone, this Elaine, excuse me, when we say standalone, is there an elimination? Of the covered walkway from the house, the new proposed home to the red barn?
Yeah, that's, that's no longer a part of it.
So even the walkway has been eliminated?
Yes, that has.
All six feet of it, yeah.
Okay.
What we have basically is an addition. With an apartment.
And but but we are voting on the covered deck. And the only question I had was, does anybody have the height of the new finished deck? I don't have that. There, it it shows me where the ridge line is, but it doesn't state the height.
Is that something, and maybe you can help us here, Elaine, if you. Yeah, thanks. Would that be something that the building department, the building officials will be? Uh, having to deal with, Gail?
I I'm sorry, I've been looking up who owns the property.
Okay.
Because when I went into the property search that's online. Uh, I couldn't get six Baker Road to show up under McDonald, uh, which is an issue that Bill raised.
Okay.
I'm 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 assuming when he applied that he was the owner of the property, but I'm, if it was transferred. Uh, I'm not certain of that, I looked at the, I was looking at the assessors records, which usually get changed over around October first. And trying to see if I could find it and I didn't figure it out, so I I'll take your question, I I was distracted, I'm sorry.
That's okay, now I forgot it.
I, what I thought was happening here is that 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 the that the so-called quote barn. Uh, on that piece of property, it was approved a long time ago, it's been there for a while. And that he is now no longer in his application requesting any sort of change for that building. And that the main house is being expanded to include an accessory apartment. Inside the house, which he's now permitted to do under your new regulations. Or when, or your fairly new regulations. And that, if if he meets the requirements, then he should get the approval. Whatever the date was on this application, there's sixty five days to approve it or deny it. It's an administrative approval, it's a residence, so it's an up or down. And if it doesn't meet it, if there's a question about the ownership on it and his ability to put in the application because he's the owner or to continue the application. You, I don't know what to say because he's not here tonight to answer that question, which is unfortunate, very unfortunate. So I don't know, I thought maybe I could pull up. Uh, because I thought I could get hold of it, I can try the land records and see if I can see whether there's a deed. So, Bill, do you have, Bill, you have some information that it was transferred?
Transferred on six sixteen, according to Caldwell Banker, who had it listed. They had it on June sixteen twenty one, it was sold.
Okay, let me take, I'm going to look at the town clerks, I'll take just a second while you're discussing the rest of this and see if I can pull it up. There should be a deed for six Baker Road, so.
Kim, make this Elaine, what you were going to ask was the height, is that something for us or the building department?
Right, I I've realized what height, yes.
It's something for you if it's over the, over the height limit allowed in the residential zone.
Would we need to know that information on the height or would that that go through the building department?
No, it's a zoning issue too, it it's a zoning issue because height, I believe you allow, is it thirty five feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it needs to be thirty five feet or less.
Well, it is zoning, this building is zoning because when the red barn got too tall, John Cody had to. Direct him to make the roof, that's why it's a gambrel roof right now, because John zoning. Determined and found out that the roof was too high, whether he found that off in the building effect. Somehow it was non-restriction to to address them.
If the, if the roof is is higher than the maximum height of, under the zoning regs. Of the addition that he's putting on. The addition, whatever's been there for years, we're not going back to, but the new addition that's putting on. If it's over the maximum height, then it needs to be lowered down to the maximum heights.
I think that the elevation of this building, the front elevation, I don't think it's the scale, there has no scale. And it looks kind of low next to the house, so it I do question how high that mid gable. Roof over the upstairs apartment in that addition will be, it doesn't seem to skip. I question it, but. I I. I can only be satisfied if I see that the scale drawing.
Sure.
Yep, I understand that, I see that, yep.
Uh, the, the, under your. Master chart. The, I'm looking for the height standard. Which, is he residence zone C?
Yes.
It's two and a half stories, forty feet max. That's under the master chart at section twenty one of your regs. That's under the ma- uh, master chart at, uh, section, uh, twenty-one of your regs.
Well, like Bill says in our, uh. Application, we have nothing telling us how high. The either structure is. I mean, he shows an elevation. We don't have an elevation for the deck. I'm more concerned on, we don't have anything to say the height of the deck covering the deck roof. And that is, uh, yeah, that's a concern and the fact that the ownership, I mean, we're all going through this. And. We'd like to know if he owns the property.
Can't we extend this for him? Can't we expand it, extend it fifty-five days?
Uh, no, he, uh, he has to consent to it. Uh, you can't do it without his consent. And the application, he dated the application seven twenty-one.
I thought it was eight.
Oh, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the new town. Okay, uh, if it's eight, then you've got until October. You have sixty-five days, so you have up until, it was eight twenty-one when it came in?
Eight seventeen twenty-one.
Yeah, so we.
Eight seventeen, I'm sorry. Okay.
August seventeenth to October seventeenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have.
Plus five.
Right.
We have, you'd have to have a special meeting to, uh, to further consider it. The other thing I suppose you could do is you could authorize the zoning enforcement officer to issue the permit. Uh, if the, if he provides. A scale drawing showing the height of the building being within the two and a half story forty-foot requirement of the zoning regs.
No, it's the only question though.
You may have, yeah, Bill, you may have some other questions.
Well, proof of ownership.
The ownership, um, so, um, let's see, I've got the online land records. Give me just a second. Let's see if I can find it. Okay?
Yep.
I didn't dream up that number. I saw that number. Sold.
Okay, Six Baker Road, I'm to the address. Which keyboard I'm on. That address, that address, uh, does not pop up. One fifty-six Baker Road does. Try back.
One fifty-six is a mile and a half away.
Yeah, I know. It helps when you put it in right. Okay, let me just see if I can find it. It's not being listed. Let me try his name. Does he own other property in town?
Does he what?
Does he own other property in town?
No. That's quite a bit of gambling.
Yeah, I'm just gonna try his, his name, all names. Let me try McDonald.
Cause there's nothing listed. There's no LLC or anything like that.
Well, his application, uh, he, he states his name.
Right.
And it was used to, everything used to be in his wife's name. Uh, but that's been years ago. I don't wanna just represent what he, what it might be.
The, the property owner's listed as, uh, Janet Dennis McDonald.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's what he put on the application. Is that what you're saying?
He does have some aliases that I found. Let's see if I can find them.
Well, those won't. The, the legal, what we're looking, okay, here's, um, there is a bunch of property listed under his name. Dennis and Janet. Warranty deed. There was the sale, um, another sale. Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing a transfer. Here's a quick claim. Here's Six Baker Road. In two thousand fifteen, it was quick claim to Dennis and Janet. Let me see if there's the second page. The, the land records are still showing Six Baker Road is owned by Dennis and Janet. Based on a quick claim deed in two thousand fifteen. There were, there was, there have, there were some, yeah. And there's, uh, there's no other McDonald entry for Six Baker Road. Yeah, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing anything else.
So does that mean that?
I mean, before you, I mean, we can ask him to confer, confirm it.
Yep.
Confirm, to confirm it before the, the zoning is issued.
So in essence, we could ask for a scale drawing showing the height of the porch, of the proposed porch. And of the proposed addition. Um, I mean, there is nothing that shows the height of the existing house either. I don't know if that's required, but.
I, I think it, we're only looking at the addition right now.
Okay.
Uh, because if that's been there three years, it's permitted.
Well, the house, yeah, it's been there a while.
Right.
And then, um, proof of ownership.
And, yeah, and he would just, uh, uh, confirm that he's, you know. To the satisfaction of the zoning officer that he's, that they're, they remain the owners.
Is it built? So we want some scale drawings. You want a location on the plot plan? And property. And, um. The driveways. Don't make sense on the plans.
Did the driveway location change? Bill, has it changed?
That's because on the addition, there's a, the front of the addition on the left-hand side is windows. And the driveway, the garage door is on the west side. And that west side just opens up to the, behind the big red building. And there's no way to get through that building without going into the side setbacks to get a driveway out to the road. So I guess you could just eliminate that garage door, but now it shows a garage door. So with a garage door, and it just goes out onto the yard.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't see that. I'm gonna look. Oh, I see because. On. This thing accessory.
In the soil stockpile, Kim?
Yeah, so you're, yeah, cause it's, according to that elevation, it doesn't have garage doors on the side that's closest to the accessory building. Which means that if it's a garage, it's, it is going out the backside.
It's going out the west side, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Right over the septic tank and.
Yeah, yep, I see that. Yep. Yep. Okay, I'm with you.
So what I'm hearing is, uh. You feel it's in, incomplete application?
Yes.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay. Then that's all we need for denial is we feel it's incomplete application.
This is Elaine, I'd like to understand what we just discussed because I'm moving paper around. So we're talking about a driveway?
Yeah, so, um, if you look at the paper that's in pink and green and yellow.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, uh, do you look at the yellow with a pole barn? The left-hand side says twenty-four by twenty-four. There's this, there's, is the pole barn is in, in three sections?
Yep.
Okay, so the left-hand side, it says twenty-four by twenty-four?
Yeah, and on the other plan, it says twenty-four by thirty.
Okay, so, well, we'll do one thing at a time, but yes, right. So that, the twenty-four by twenty-four, what Bill was bringing up is that on the elevation drawing. There are no, um, garage doors facing. Excuse me. Facing, um, the driveway, they actually face to the back of the green. Accessory building, which means that the driveway for, to get in and out of that garage area, you'd have to go around the back and over the septic system, which. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I, I understand now.
Yeah. Now, unless, does it say? Is, is that supposed to be a garage or, um, I think that's something.
Does say garage under.
But there are two spaces already for a garage, so is that one then not a garage? Uh, with garage and storage converted. So I say convert a garage under to rec space. Add two-car crotch, okay, so.
It says west garage below, right?
Vehicle garage and recreation vehicle garage.
Says convert, on the application, it says convert garage under to rec space. And our. Add two-car attached garage twenty-four by twenty-four, so. Um, it, it is unclear.
It's.
Because what I'm thinking is that he's got. No, well, I do, I do. You know, I do understand it. Okay, so the, if you go back to that, the one I was just referencing with, uh, Elaine. With the colors, you've got the green and the yellow, so the yellow piece of pa- uh, paper that shows the pole barn. So he's got a two-car garage attached to the existing house. Twenty-four by twenty-four. That's the one that's, he's referencing. And then there's an apartment in the center section above with a garage below it. And then to the left, it's twenty-four by twenty-four, and I believe that is not a garage. That is a rec space. It is not absolutely clear, but there are two twenty-four by twenty-four, um, things on either side, right? One is a garage and the other is, um, I believe a rec space, but.
It says rec space and vehicle garage.
Yep, well, on one side is a vehicle garage and the other side is a rec space.
No.
No, it's a rec.
No. Yeah. Uh, the, the one on the right facing says twenty-four by twenty-four, two-car main home garage.
Yep.
And then in the center, we have accessory garage with storage. And then on the left, we have a twenty-four by thirty recreation vehicle garage.
Wow.
That's what it says, recreation vehicle garage.
Is that for recreation vehicles or recreation and vehicle?
Vehicle, yeah.
But, uh, not a garage door at the end where Bill was talking about, and that's what I was wondering, but it is not clear. I, I agree. It's not clear.
It is.
What is a rec space? It's. Yeah.
Why isn't it show for the meetings?
Yep.
On, on the, on the use, uh, part of this new construction, page two of the application. It says the use is two and a half story house. And then it says accessory building.
Uh, page two.
There are two existing buildings.
Well, uh, new construction, it says accessory apartment garage utility.
Right.
When it gives the height of the existing at thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five.
And it says that, and it says the driveway is existing. On the third page.
This.
So do you, I mean, if you feel like you have conflicting information in this application. So it's impossible to. To know precisely what's being presented or that you need more detail to do it. Um. Without him here to answer these questions, I think your choices are to, your choices are to deny it and. Uh, indicate what information you need. I think you should do both of those things. Um, because you're up against, you're gonna be up against a time, uh, requirement. Or if you think they're minor changes, the, the zoning officer could just confirm. You, you, you could authorize the zoning officer within this timeframe to approve it if he gets that information. And if he doesn't get that information, to deny it. So you can do, uh, you do either of those things.
Zoning officer stepped down from this.
What's that?
The zoning officer stepped down from this.
Well, the assistant zoning officer, is that you, Jim?
I suppose.
I mean, it, it, it doesn't require another meeting is all that I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I'd like to get there as well.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, Dennis isn't here. He wasn't with us last month either. When we first talked about this.
I think he should deny it. Say we don't have enough information. These sheets of paper don't.
I think you should indicate what information you need. I mean, you've been through this months with him.
Yes.
Are we still on the proof of ownership question?
I don't, I don't have the answer to it. I, the last deed that I could see. For Six Baker Road was in, into he and his wife a quick claim. I mean, it's something we could check, uh, with the land use office. And see that there's been no recent deed that's not posted yet.
Okay. So that, that would be reasonable to have that as one of the, one of.
Yeah.
As sold by Coldwell Banker.
Yeah, but it made, that doesn't mean that it's been transferred.
That's true. But it raised questions.
It has been definitely, it looks like it's been advertised. And, uh, but, uh, they may have a contract to sell it and they've taken it off the market.
Okay. So what are the things that we, right, for, for me, I'm. I am, I think the height of the proposed building and the porch roof. Proof of ownership. The application is it's unclear where the garages are because Bill and I both thought that, that 24 by 24 on the left-hand side near the accessory building was also a garage. It may not be, but it's not clear in the application what the use is for that side of the plane. I mean, there's no garage door there on the elevation, you know, so, but I don't have an elevation for the, the other side, so I'm, I'm uncertain.
The only possibility to me on that question, as far as it shows the 24 by 24 space to the west.
Yeah.
It is pole barn construction. Chances are, you can access that space from the center. The whole, the whole first floor could be open. Open construction.
But that's, you know, that's, we're assuming.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and that's, I don't think we can do that.
It's whatever you folks want to do. If we, it's either deny or approve. Obviously, if we have question, my big question's ownership. I don't have a concern over the heights because I don't think he's going to make a deck roof higher than the existing house.
We don't have an elevation for that, right?
There isn't. Oh, no, there isn't.
I don't think he's going to go higher than, you know.
We don't think we don't own.
It's up to you guys. It's getting late, and we've been sitting here for too long on this.
A left-hand garage. I have one at 24 by 24 and another at 24 by 30.
Oh, right. Where does it say the 24 by 30?
That's the garage.
I have it in two places.
Yeah, but then on the.
Oh, I see it.
It's 24 by 24.
Now, I see. Okay.
Wow.
Okay, yeah, I, um.
And then, and then on this one, it is identified as west, west garage. So it's labeled a garage on this one, and it is identified 30.
Doesn't show, it says below, it doesn't tell you what that upstairs is.
Okay, so I'm looking at the, yeah, I'm looking at the floor plan for that, and it's a two-car garage. It says main home accessory apartment grade level, shows vehicle, recreation garage with the two garage doors heading out behind the current accessory building, I see it, and then yeah, I think that's a problem with access way and going over the septic system. I'm going to suggest that we deny it.
There's another question. It says the existing home is to become 2,900 square feet. If we're saying the existing home is 1,800 square feet, and, oh, yes, I apologize, then he's asking for 1,152. Okay. So he's estimating 2,900. I answered my own question.
There is a, there is a reference to the new covered deck. On one of the diagrams, it says 12 by 21.
Uh huh.
Is that also one of the, is that something you're looking for more information on? What is?
Height of the porch.
The height of the covering, the roof.
Oh, okay.
So these would be things that I, this is Kim, that I would be wanting to know more about. One would be the driveway access, as Bill stated, on the list, the west, is that west side? West side garage that would send it out back and around the current accessory building, which would take it over the septic tank, which you can't put a driveway over the septic tank, and the, the height of the proposed building, which is not listed, height of the porch, which is not listed, nor do we have a drawing, and proof of ownership. I personally wouldn't feel comfortable approving with all of that. I think that's too many things to be questioning with this application.
Deny it, we give him another 65-day clock.
Right, yep.
If you deny it, he has to put in an application that remedies all that information, and you have 65 days to consider it.
Right.
Or you can appeal it to the ZBA.
Correct.
And was that a motion, or would you prefer that I make a motion?
I, I was just put, listing the things that I was thinking about.
Oh.
So you can certainly make a motion.
Just, but as Gail suggested, we're all, are we all in agreement on those five points?
There might be, we're, we're getting kind of rushed right now. I think we should give them another 65-day clock and then sort this thing out in an organized fashion, rather than making a list of things right now. We might leave something out.
Well, you can say that you need additional information, including, but you're, you're going to have a you really have no choice but to make a decision on it one way or the other, within 65 days.
Which is now.
Yeah, I mean, he can get another 65 days, he gets a new 65 days when he re-appeals.
Okay. So when, when a motion is made and some, someone seconds it, do we then state why? Or do we state it first and then, I forgot this now because it's all new.
Yeah, I mean, you could make a motion stating all the reasons that you have on information that is necessary for you to make a decision, and therefore you're, you view that the application is incomplete or that the application is, is not clear enough for you to make a decision to approve.
Yeah, with those things stated.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
But I think when we state the things, we should say including those things.
Yeah, I like that idea, yeah.
Okay.
That gives us the opportunity to bring up things that we forgot to.
True.
And I still feel incomplete application covers all bases.
Yeah, it's information that you need to determine compliance.
Yeah.
That's a good sentence.
Who wants to do the motion? Anybody clamoring?
I'm, I'm ready if you want.
Okay. Jim, is that good?
Sure.
Okay.
This is Elaine Curly. I present a motion to deny this application based on the fact that we need more information. More information is necessary to make a decision. So the additional information in we need additional information, including the information on driveway access, the west garage, the septic, the driveway leading over the septic, which is not allowed, the height of the porch, and proof of ownership.
And the height of the, the.
The height of the building.
We don't need a high elevation for the whole building.
Yep.
Do we have a second to her motion?
My second, it's Kim. Oh, sorry.
Can I? Can, can I just say something to you?
Yep.
In, in, on the new construction chart, where it says new construction, and it says there are two existing buildings and structures on the lot indicated below in the structures, so that 35-foot height, so we have no indication that, that the addition is going to be the 35 feet. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And the word including was in our motion.
Yeah. Kim, were you the second on that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
So just correct me if I'm wrong, but on page two, new construction, accessory apartment garage utility, and under height, he's got 33 feet.
About 35?
33. Page two.
Looks like a five.
I have 35s.
Yeah, he's got 35.
What's mine say?
Oh.
On the top, it says 33 under new. Oh, I see.
Two.
I see it.
Okay.
So, so he does have a height for the new construction.
Right, okay.
We can eliminate that. So we'd have to amend. That's the height of the building?
Of the, of the.
Of the addition, of the building.
Of the.
Yeah.
It says describe construction of structure, so this is going to be accessory apartment.
Right. But we still don't have elevations on the porch. The porch is. I mean, normally, one could assume that it wouldn't exceed the height of the house.
Right, but we don't want to do that. Okay, so you want to amend the motion then to, to exclude the height of the proposed building, right?
This is this is Elaine. I move to deny this application in finding it's necessary to, to gain additional information, including the driveway access on the west garage. It appears as though we need to clarify that it's not driveway over septic, and the height of the porch, and proof of ownership.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
Elaine, he should mute.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion to deny, and we listed the reasons for denial. Now I'm going to ask Alan. You deny? So did I. Kim? Bill?
Can I add anything to the motion, just deny? I just wanted to add, and whatever else is needed to determine completeness.
Forgive Blue for barking, but excuse me, I, I did say additional information necessary in the motion, so does that cover it? For you?
You, you, you mean to, to determine compliance, is that right, Elaine?
Yes.
Okay, if everybody that's voted agreed, that's what it said, I think you're okay.
And I'll vote to deny.
Okay, that's everybody.
That's everybody.
To everybody.
All right.
Kim, you were the second on that motion again.
Yes.
No, Kim, Kim, I thought, I thought you said Jim. Sorry. Elaine made, Elaine made the motion, Kim seconded the motion, and it was unanimous denial.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Lack of information. And my biggest thing is ownership. You can't apply if you don't own it. All right, that is taken care of. Item seven. John, you still with us? Do we have a ZEO report?
There we go. If I can make this quick, I can keep it under 9:30. It picked up at work again. I thought we're in a little bit of a lull, but it got busy. I have two houses, one is probably, what is EBA? We're trying to figure that out now. The other one, I think we, we were able to utilize that regulation for the 25%, and I think we're going to be avoiding ZBA in it, which will be great. A lot of generators came through, three just today. I did issue an NOV for a illegal shed on the corner of Garnet and Mallory. So far, the people have been rather receptive, so I'm hopeful that'll end up easy. And that'll be it, so I can keep it short. How's that?
Very good, thank you. Um, all right. All right. Anybody? I got an echo there. Does anyone have anything else to bring to the commission? All good. Nikki, you still with us? Thank you for coming. I think she left us too.
No, I'm still here. I was writing.
Oh, taking notes.
It was a good night.
I like the determine compliance, that's a good one. Yeah, I, thank you for inviting me.
All right, we'll, we'll keep in touch.
Okay.
All righty. Good, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I want to thank Gail for coming. It was really very, very, very helpful, and I appreciate that very much. I know we all do.
And I, I need to thank Kim for, she did a tremendous amount of work on the new regulation and did a terrific, did a terrific job.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you all. Now, motion to adjourn.
It's Kim, I'll motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Very good, any opposed? Thank you very much, folks. Have a good night, and we will see you soon.
I do apologize to everybody for Blue. I'm sorry. She was telling me, my, the meeting's too long. Good night, thank you.
Good night, everyone. Bye-bye.